Good evening. I'd like to call the Tuesday, February 11th meeting to order of the Pittsburgh Commission. Please join me in the flag salute.
My pleasure.
The legions to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation and my God, indivisible, with evergreen and justice for all.
Thank you. We have Commissioner O'Brien joining us via telephone, and we also want to welcome those that are watching us on Crawl Can, Channel 406, as well as Cox on 6, so you have two options. We'll move into public input. Those that are sharing public input, we ask that you keep your remarks to three to five minutes, but I would like to invite Pastor Faren down from the Osage Church over in the bathroom.
Let us pray. Dear Lord, we come before you tonight, gather together to do the business of the city of Pittsburgh. As we go through the agenda and go over the many different items that are presented, give us hearts and minds of willingness to listen and understand the things that are being asked of us. Lord, I ask you to guide the leaders, to give them the wisdom that is needed to do what's best for the city, and we give you all the praise and glory. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Anyone else like to come forward for public input? All right, seeing none. We have a great, we have a proclamation this evening for the Crawford County Bar Association. It's Kristin Maughan, Angela Meyer, and John Missouri who join me on the white backs. Whereas in 2019, the Kansas Bar Foundation provided Kansas Legal Services in Pittsburgh with a grant to support an expungement drive in southeast Kansas, and whereas in expungement seals, an individual's criminal conviction making the records unavailable through the state and federal repositories, and whereas members of the Crawford County Bar Association generously donated their time to provide no-cost advice and representation, making the Kansas Bar Foundation's expungement drive successful, and whereas it is anticipated that 50 individuals in the city of Pittsburgh and Crawford County will benefit as a result of the expungement drive, and whereas individuals granted expungement are provided with a clean slate, enabling them to pursue employment, education, and housing opportunities. Now, therefore, I, Don McNay, Mayor of City of Pittsburgh, Kansas, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, February 11th, 2020, as Crawford County Bar Association Day in Pittsburgh, and encourage all citizens to recognize the local attorneys and the members of the Crawford County Bar Association for their generous commitment to the Kansas Bar Foundation's expungement drive. We have Kristin and John and Angela with us. Do you have station words?
My name is Kristin Maughan. I am a staff attorney with Kansas Legal Services. So, the Kansas Bar Foundation is the charitable arm of the Kansas Bar Association, and they give community development grants. We were fortunate enough to receive one this past year to focus specifically on expungements. The goal was to accomplish at least 50 expungements, which we did. We also opened over 100 individual cases to provide advice and direct representation. Expungements are profoundly meaningful for our clients. They're often held back from employment opportunities, from housing. They choose to forego educational opportunities because they believe that their criminal records are going to prevent them from being a participating member of their community. When we seal these records, we remove a tremendous barrier, and we let people achieve their full potential and be part of the community. Now, we could not have done any of that without the Crawford County Bar Association. The attorneys generously donated their time to provide representation to individuals. They attended a training presentation to learn about expungement and how to provide that advice and representation. We could not have reached the number of individuals and provided the extensive services that we did if it hadn't been for them. So, Kansas Legal Services is very grateful to the Crawford County Bar Association.
So, I guess join me in thanking them. We'll move on into the consent agenda. In the consent agenda, we have the January 28th, 2020 commission meeting minutes. We have approval of ordinance G 1309 annexing land into the boundaries of the city of Pittsburgh per the request of Eric Bradshaw and Jacqueline Eustace. We've had that several times in terms of our agenda. We have annual recommendation from the EDAC to grant the 2020 tax abatements, renewals for Millers, Pinamani Physical Therapy, Railson, Kendall Packaging, and Dharma Properties. We have approval of a request submitted by Greg Moore to renew dance hall license for Mormons, and approval of the appropriation ordinance. Are there any items to be removed from the consent agenda? Seeing none, I would ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved. I'll second it.
Moved by, very seconded by Chuck. Rule call though. Brooks?
Yes.
Fields?
Yes.
McNay?
Yes.
Lenzel?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Aye.
All right, motion passes to approve the consent agenda. Moving into special presentation, we have the Active Transportation Advisory Board Annual Report. Darrell Pullman, Chairman of the Active Transportation Advisory Board, the ATAB, will present their annual report.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm here this evening to talk about the Active Transportation Advisory Board. I've prepared a very short presentation. It'll be a quick, I know it's a full agenda, so just very briefly, I want to walk you through some of our activities for the year. What is the ATB? We refer to the board as ATAB. It's basically a volunteer organization made up of citizens within the community and the region, really to be in advisory capacity for the city to help make recommendations for non-motorized transportation around the city. Some of the things, so we're basically a volunteer board made up of seven people. We split the city by quadrants, really from Fourth and Broadway, so there's a northeast, southeast, northwest, southwest, four areas, and then we have three other appointees, one in the health field industry, one with a disability, and then one from a nonprofit organization. The people that's currently sitting on these, on this committee is represented here on this slide. Deborah Anthony is in the healthcare industry. Deborah Ball-McGeorge is the northwest quad. John Robb is the southwest quad. Dick Horton represents the nonprofit. I, Darrell Pulliam, represent the southeast quad, and then we currently have two open positions. One is for the northeast quad, and then the other is for the disability advocate. So, those two spots are currently available. If anyone is interested, either listening online or in the room, you can go online to the website for Pittsburgh and download the application and fill out the application, and it would come back before you as commissioners to approve those to our board. Very quickly, some of the things that we've done this last year is a couple of projects that I want to bring mention to is the South Roush Project at the railroad crossings. We helped give guidance and suggestions on getting that crossing across the railroad tracks, which helped to complete the pathway, which made it a lot more user-friendly when you're traveling down Roush on either foot or bicycle. The South Roush completion of the road and the trail is a great access to that side of town. Now, to be able to ride down that road, it's one that I ride down frequently, and I can tell you it's been a significant improvement going down there to get out of town. The char markings on South Broadway, the other one is $100,000 grant, which basically through Livwell, Crawford County, that was brought over to the ATAB to help work with the north medical district area for improving the right-of-way and the accessibility to those medical facilities on the north end of town. A couple other projects that are worth mentioning, we did a marketing competition this past year with Pittsburgh State through one of their marketing courses, and we brought in teams to help analyze what we were doing, both good and bad, within our committee, and they brought several suggestions forth, and one of those actually turned out to be an internship program, which we have now put in place for 2020, and through the help of the city and the Public Works Office, Public Communication Officer here, we now have an intern that's working with us to help improve our branding and imagery online and onsite. Then there was one other trail, the Memorial Drive Trail was a KDOT grant that we received that's currently going to be constructed in 2020. Moving forward in 2020, we've got a couple of really significant projects. One is going to be supported by a local company, Creative 124. They're going to help us take quite a bit of live footage that we went out and shot of all of the trails. We're going to put together a nice promotional video that'll be represented on the website and other areas. And then finally, the PSU marketing internship that I just threw. I know you have a full agenda. I would be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Lot of work done. Any questions for Darrell?
Right.
Do you have any other members of your committee here?
I think we do. Can you hear, yep, Deborah's in the back.
Public hearing on such matter and providing for the giving of notice of such public hearing.
Good evening. Okay, so I'm going to reintroduce Garth Herman with Gilmore and Bell. He has worked with us before with our rural housing incentive district projects, and also Dr. Shane Knar with Knar Eye Care. As you know, the rural housing incentive district is really a tool, the only tool, to really, it really attracts development on green fields, especially in rural communities like ours. That is the purpose of it, is to attract development, and the incentive there is a payback to the developer based on the increase in property taxes. So Shane, or Dr. Knar, I should say, is looking to put in a new development and will be utilizing rural housing incentive district.
Welcome.
Hi. I'd like to appreciate you all giving us time, and we're looking at putting in a small four-house development there with similar houses to the neighborhood in green space. And when we look at infrastructure and what we need to make that happen, we need the city, county, and school district's support in order to make that feasible. I think there's long-term benefits to the community. I think the housing addition already has interest, and I think it'll all be longstanding members of the community who have long supported many of the efforts in Pittsburgh. So, we do appreciate any assistance you guys can give with this resolution.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. Garth Herman with Gilmore and Bell, the city's bond council. As Quentin mentioned, I work with the city as these rural housing incentive district programs come up to basically help the city draft the agreements and take all the proper steps necessary to authorize and establish these districts on an as-needed basis. So, with regards to this project, you know, overall, the RHID, I was going to come up and kind of explain this to you, but Quentin did a very good job of kind of running through that, but you know, basically, as he said, the whole theory is that as development occurs in a district that has been established, there is a property tax revenue increase. The property tax revenues that come from the base value of that property, basically the value before any improvements were made on that, those property taxes still get distributed in the same way to the city and to the county, to the school districts, and nothing on the base changes. But as the valuation increases, there's increased property tax revenue that comes from that. Almost all of that increased increment then flows back to the city and then pursuant to a development agreement that the city enters into with the developer. Basically, that property tax increment can be used in order to reimburse some of the public infrastructure costs related to this development. In this particular case, as Dr. Knar said, basically, he's looking to build a four, you know, a four-house subdivision right now. As part of that, he's established that there are some of the public infrastructure improvements and the approximate amount of, I think, $420,000, you know, right around there, that could be eligible for reimbursement from the RHID property tax revenues once the houses are built and sold and that incremental value comes in. But in order to be able to have that RHID revenue to help offset some of those costs, basically, the city has to go through the formal process set forth under the state law in order to properly establish the district for this particular subdivision, the Payton's Hamlet. It's kind of a two-step process from the city's perspective. You know, you've done a lot of the, you know, kind of beginning work, working with the State Department of Commerce in order to identify eligible areas throughout the city, and now it comes in where there is this, you know, this specific property that the city's looking to work with in this case. So, basically, the first step is your action tonight, which would be to adopt a resolution to call a public hearing on the establishment of that RHID or that RID district. Basically, the resolution, if adopted tonight, it'll be published in the city's newspaper in March to alert the public of the upcoming public hearing. The resolution will also be mailed to the county as well as to the Board of Education of USD 250, and notice will be given to certain city offices to basically let them know of this upcoming public hearing. On March 24th, that's the date that the public hearing is scheduled for, at that point, then basically, the city commission will open and hold a public hearing. Any concerned citizens can come and speak on the Payton's Hamlet RHID at that point, and then at the close of the public hearing, there will be an ordinance that the city commission will consider. If that ordinance is passed, that will formally establish the creation of this RHID for this project. Roughly 30 days after that ordinance gets passed is the end of a nullification period during which notice will be given to the county and to the school district once again to let them know that this has been established. At the end of that 30-day period, then in essence, all of the documents will be sent again to the county to let them know, go ahead and put this new RHID on the books so that the next time that the tax statements start going out, then there is a notification with regards to these, you know, specific properties, that that property tax revenue is going to be handled differently for the life of that RHID. And the life of that RHID, it can now last up to 25 years. When I was here last, a couple of years ago, it was a 15-year. State law got changed last year to provide that it can go up to 25 years. It doesn't mean that it has to stay in place that long, but basically, that's a maximum not to exceed time limit for the RHID to be in place. So, with that being said, that's, I know that's a lot of talking on my part. So, if there's any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer those as best that I can. And basically, this agenda item for the resolution, as well as the next agenda item, they all kind of relate to the same thing, so we can take them separately. If there's any questions on either one, I'll be more than happy to answer them.
I have a question, and maybe you can answer, but on Silverback Landing, we had basically what it was going to look like drawing-wise, and then at some point, we went through this process. So, I take it at some point, starting the process now, we will see what this development looks like.
So, we do have a plot. It goes to P&amp;Z at the next meeting, and then we submit it to you guys. We ran into some weather issues, so it just got pushed back a meeting, but we do have a tenancy plot. You guys should see it at the next plane.
I have a question. It's not been to P&amp;Z yet, right?
That is correct.
Okay. So, why are we putting the cart ahead of the horse, then? Wouldn't you go to P&amp;Z first and then come here?
We've been working with P&amp;Z as much as we could. I think we have addressed most issues, but when you look at the timing and the season when our actual road could be put in, if we went to P&amp;Z first, then we did for your next meeting, then we're pushed back where you really get into construction issues and weather concerns.
All right.
And we're happy to provide a tenancy plot to the commission.
And really, this resolution is just announcing the intention and scheduling a public hearing.
It's saying you will consider it.
Right. So, we're not necessarily approving it tonight. We're just starting the process.
That is correct.
So, it doesn't have to go before P&amp;Z first in order for it to be, you know, with the proper procedures that the city has put forth in their ordinances and regulations?
It would actually pass as a resolution, but to pass the way it is, to have open discussion, it does not have to go to P&amp;Z first, is my understanding, and we've tried to work with the city along as we go here.
Henry, can you confirm that?
No, I can't. I have not been involved in this process.
Under state law, it does not have to be approved by the planning commission before this resolution is adopted. Now, I can't speak to, if there are, you know, city policies, you know, related to, you know, construction or housing subdivisions, that I can't speak to, but at least under state law, planning, planning and zoning approval does not need to occur before this resolution is adopted.
I'd like clarification on that.
If I may. Cameron Alden, Public Works Director. Beforehand, when the RHID was initially set up and that program brought in here, there were quite a number of parcels across the city that were brought into the RID, so they would be eligible for the program should the property owner want to pursue that. So, we've got already on the books quite a number of parcels that are undeveloped that are eligible for the RID program. There's not a requirement to have a development plan in place or a plat in place prior to being considered or eligible for the RID. For them to be able to get, recapture that, they'd have to bring in there, in, and get the development agreement approved to go forward, and obviously, any plat would have to be done, reviewed by the planning commission and by this commission before that moved forward. But no, it's not a requirement for you to have it already pre-plated prior to being considered for the RID.
Patrick, do you have any questions?
No, I don't. I think it's kind of a good project, and I'm looking forward to see it go forward.
Could we, you said you did have some preliminary plan of that.
We did, and we're happy to get those to the city to submit. Realizing it's tenancy, we still have to wait on it.
Planning and zoning, yeah, and maybe after planning and zoning, we can.
Oh, after the planning, I mean, when's that?
The 24th.
24th of this month.
Right. So, there'll be planning and zoning the 24th. We'll have a March 10th meeting, and the public hearing is the 24th of March. So, we're about a month before. Okay. Any other questions? I would entertain a motion to approve.
I shall move.
Okay, we second.
Moved by Patrick, seconded by Larry to approve Resolution 1231. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on, funding agreement. Knar, Payton's Hamlet Rural Housing Incentive District, consider approval of a funding agreement between the city of Pittsburgh and Shane R. Knar in regards to the Payton Hamlet's Rural Housing Incentive District.
I'll take this one also. Garth Herman. So, this is a contract between the city of Pittsburgh and Shane Knar as a developer. Well, basically, the city incurs costs related to basically the establishment and administration of setting up this RHID for Payton's Hamlet. What this funding agreement does is it provides a way for the city to have a source of funds to help pay for those costs so that they don't just come out of the city coffers. And basically, by entering into this agreement, the city and Shane are agreeing that Shane will put up money on deposit with the city, and that as the city gets invoices or bills related to basically, you know, the creation of this RHID, whether it's legal fees or publications or mailing expenses, they can pay for those costs from that fund that has been funded by Shane and set up with the city. And that's really the intent of what this funding agreement is, so that the city can go through the processes, do, you know, do what it needs to do, but not be out of city funds related to the project.
What's the amount in funds?
The initial deposit will be for $15,000.
And I would like to clarify that through our discussions, I know in the past, I've had some dollars from the city, but this is all my dollars just being transferred to the city to use for these expenses.
Any other questions? Any other questions? I would entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
I would.
Moved by Chuck, seconded by Larry to approve the funding agreement for Payton's Hamlet Rural Housing Incentive District. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, sign. Motion carries. Thank you for being here.
Thank you very much.
Moving on, Sustainability Advisory Committee Appointment. Consider staff recommendation to appoint one member to fill an unexpired term as a member of the Sustainability Advisory Committee effective immediately and concluding on December 31st, 2020.
Let me remind you that Patrick O'Brien is on the phone, so he's actually just going to say his choice out loud, so don't anybody be shocked. We don't usually do that, but we need you to pick one, please.
We have two candidates. We have Sarah Chenoweth and Tiffany Perry.
Is any of them here?
Sarah's not.
Is anybody, or are they not going to get some space, or...
I know Sarah's not.
Are you Tiffany?
I am.
Oh, well, come on now! Sorry! You were giving me the sign, but I thought, welcome Tiffany.
Sorry, Tiffany.
Yeah. No worries. Just, if you want to share a little bit about yourself and why you're interested in the committee?
Okay, Pittsburgh's my hometown. I'm a high school graduate here. I have two degrees from PSU. Spent some time in Kansas City as a corporate tax accountant, then transferred to Parsons, back to Pittsburgh to raise my family. I work telecommunications for a company over in Parsons, Kansas, for about the last 18 years. And now that my children have kind of gotten a little bit older, I'm very interested in the sustainability concepts of saving our earth and things that are good for our hometown and the earth overall. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now we can go do-over.
Do-over.
Can you ask Patrick?
Patrick, your vote is?
My vote is Sarah Chenoweth.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we would entertain a motion to select Tiffany Perry as the newest member of Sustainability Advisory Committee.
All right.
Welcome her board.
I'll make a motion, well, do you feel we need, make a motion to approve Tiffany Perry, a new member of Sustainability Advisory Board?
I would second.
Moved by Chuck, seconded by Larry to approve Tiffany Perry as a member of the Sustainability Advisory Committee. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, sign. All right, welcome. Welcome Tiffany.
Congratulations.
Yeah. All right, moving on. Pittsburgh Area Chamber of Commerce Economic Development Services Agreement. Consider approval of the Economic Development Services Agreement between the Pittsburgh Area Chamber of Commerce and the City of Pittsburgh, in which the chamber will perform the services related to the location and retention of industrial, manufacturing, and retail businesses in the city for the year beginning February 11th, 2020, and expiring on December 31st, 2020. Blake Benson and...
Mayor, city commissioners, the next two ordinances deal with the economic development contracts that we have annually with the chamber in PSU. The first one is for $45,000, or excuse me, the, yeah, the first one is for $45,000 with the chamber. Their current contract is for business retention, expansion, and workforce development, and I believe Blake Benson. Go ahead, Blake.
Thank you, Darren. And before I get to any questions, I just wanted to say how much, on behalf of the chamber, how much we value our partnership with the City of Pittsburgh and Pittsburgh State to coordinate the economic development services for our community. I feel like we've had a number of successes, but I can't tell you how serious we take our role, all the way from our Board of Directors, our chairman Jeff Elliott is with me tonight, to our professional team, and all of our members in general. We truly do believe that a rising tide lifts all boats, and a growing economic development community is something that benefits not only the businesses, but the residents of our community as well. But you have in front of you our contract. As Darren mentioned, this is virtually unchanged from years past. The amount is the same, the scope of work is very similar to in the past, but with that, be happy to answer any questions that you may have specifically.
Yeah, Blake, I talked to you earlier, and I did a little research on business license for the city of our businesses, and license paid to date expiring on 12/31/2020, general license 582. Last year, the general license was 780, 678. That's a down 96 licenses, and you explain a little bit about that?
Yes, sir, Commissioner, I do appreciate that phone call. Unfortunately, not every, even though they're required to, not everyone who is operating a business in Pittsburgh currently has a business license. It is in the city statutes that they are to do so. It's still early enough in the year that I think some of those maybe just got a little behind in renewing. But I did reach out today to Dr. Michael Davidson at the Kels College of Business at Pittsburgh State just to get an idea of how many businesses we truly do have in Pittsburgh. And you had that on the screen, it's the bottom column there, number of businesses in Pittsburgh. And you can actually see that from the end of 2018 to the end of 2019, we actually saw a 2% increase in the number of businesses. So total, right now, we have just over 1,800 businesses in Pittsburgh. That's an increase of 35 from the same time at the end of 2018. So our community continues to grow, our business community continues to grow, but obviously, it's an ongoing effort with us trying to communicate to existing businesses that they do need to have that business license to be current.
I noticed in some of your scope of work in retaining businesses, a couple of things you do, you go, I guess, you go to how many businesses?
36, at least.
Ask how the business is doing. Future plans, concerns, opportunity requests, no issues? I, I would like to see that number bumped up a heck of a lot more than 36, because during the campaign for reelection, I went to a lot of businesses, and I knocked on the doors and went in, talked to them. A lot of them had said they haven't met you, or, as a matter of fact, Darren, I'd like to see you go to, probably get to many of our businesses that we have in the city. And I know 1,800 and four businesses. If you had to do that, I could give you a rough estimate. I went to 1,700 and it took me three months to do it. You don't need to go to 1,700, but, you know, I think, I think we need to reach out to, you know, I know you talk to large businesses, medium, all the small ones. I don't know, you know, there's a lot of contact through Old Rotary and Sunflower Juana's and Chamber Coffee. A lot of these businesses probably don't attend that kind of events, but that's one of my requests, is have you tried to reach out to a lot more businesses?
Certainly.
Blake, could you explain what exactly your process is?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, and in previous contracts that were given to us, it specifically requested that we focus on manufacturers with that business retention and expansion program, and not speaking for past commissions, but I think the thinking behind that is manufacturers sometimes can kind of get isolated out in industrial parks. They're all, they're kind of off the beaten path, and you don't necessarily go by Eagle Pitcher unless you intend to go by Eagle Pitcher, because it's not easy to find. So in past contracts, that's why we focused on the manufacturing sector, and I would say at least two of the significant expansions that we've had over the last five or six years were a result of that program, specifically at Kendall Packaging and at Eagle Pitcher. But as we mentioned in our city working day, we, what we're proposing with this year is it's not necessarily just manufacturers, but we need to make sure that small, medium, and large businesses all receive visits. And we never want to be intrusive, especially to a small business, because we know our small businesses are extremely busy, but if there is anyone listening tonight that would like an in-person visit, absolutely, please call me, please let one of you know and communicate that to me, and we will schedule that immediately, because if there's a business in our community that has a concern or a growth opportunity that the city can help with, we will be there. I can assure you.
One more question for you, and then I'll let the other commissioner...
Can I, is this a different question, because I was going to ask something related to...
Maybe it might be the same question.
You go ahead.
My question, I see on there, expanding childcare options in Pittsburgh.
Yes, sir.
Can you tell us a little bit about that?
Happy to. For those of us that don't have children or grandchildren of daycare age, we may not realize that this is a, this is a big issue for growing our economy, but I can tell you that in visiting with our Young Professionals Group a couple of years ago, and we were actually talking about Imagine Pittsburgh 2030 and economic development and transportation, and they voiced a big concern about the lack of available childcare slots available. And in working with the providers like the Family Resource Center, I believe they have close to 120 to 130 kids just on the waiting list. That's not their fault. It's kind of a numbers game, because you can only have so many employees per kid, and just with the demographics of our area, they actually had to charge what it costs to provide that care. There are a lot of people that wouldn't be able to afford it. So it's not as easy as just slapping on a new wing of the Family Resource Center or Pittsburgh Community Childcare Center. So it's kind of a universal problem. Pittsburgh isn't the only one tackling this, but to give credit to past city commissions, they felt like if it's an issue, if it's a barrier to economic development, somebody needs to take the lead on it. So we stepped up and volunteered to do that. So what we have done is we've brought together our providers with the business community, and where we are in that process is the current providers are coming up with cost estimates of what it would cost maybe to do a satellite location of, say, the Family Resource Center in one of our industrial parks. And if they were able to do that, would the surrounding businesses in that industrial park, would they be willing to contribute financially to either building the building, operating the facility, to make it cost-effective for our providers to expand their capacity? So that's really where we are in that process, but we want to continue moving that ball forward, because that Young Professionals Group is telling us that young people are deciding not to move to Pittsburgh, because it's going to be two years before they can get a child into an existing provider. That's probably a lot more than you want.
It's funny, that's good. Thanks.
Following up on Chuck's first question, maybe as you report to weekly, monthly, you can share which businesses you're doing that are new, that you haven't gone to before?
Certainly.
As opposed to expanding the number, but just making...
Absolutely.
The other thing I wanted to ask is, do you sign a confidentiality, do we have a confidentiality agreement that you sign, or is it inherent?
No, but I believe it's spelled out in the agreement here that any information we come in contact with is confidential.
Well, I know we're going to talk a little bit later about the land use plan, but in your scope of work, under workforce development, I mean redevelopment and, you know, maintaining an inventory, that the land use plan is a supporting document about.
Absolutely.
As you work on that. Any other questions for Blake or Darren?
I don't have a question, but I have a comment. When you call on these businesses, if you'd like a member of the commission to go along, it would be beneficial, but not detrimental, why maybe some of us would be glad to go along with you, if you'd like.
I'll take you up on that. Thanks.
All right, is anyone feeling emotion in them?
I shall move.
I second it.
Moved by Patrick, seconded by Cheryl to approve the Pittsburgh Area Chamber of Commerce Economic Development Services Agreement. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, sign.
Aye.
Same sign, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Blake. Moving on, Pittsburgh State University Business Development and Innovation Services Agreement. Consider approval of the Business Development and Innovation Services Agreement between Pittsburgh State University and the City of Pittsburgh, in which PSU will provide support to the city to effectively help create and attract new businesses, industries, and manufacturing concerns to the city, as well as more effectively promote the expansion and growth of existing businesses and industries already located in the city for the year beginning February 11th, 2020, and expiring on December 31st, 2020. Cheryl?
Great. Good evening again, Commissioners. As Blake explained, the contract, we work in collaboration with the chamber and with the city to fulfill our obligations. I think you've had a chance to examine our scope of work and look a little bit through the contract, so I could go through some of the numbers, if that's what you'd like to hear, or if you have specific questions regarding our scope of work, I would be willing to address those.
What is this more effectively, effectively promote and the expansion and growth of existing business and industry already located in the city? What do you do more effectively than the chamber would do?
What we would do is we specifically would work more probably with the manufacturers and our area of expertise. Myself personally, I go out and meet with a large amount of manufacturers as part of the scope of work, and then we dig in to determine what areas of resource that we might be able to provide, and that could be anything that comes through. Our unit, as we've tried to explain before, is a very interesting unit that's made up of a collection of resources from small business development to the innovation, to the faculty, to the researchers at the Tyler Research Center. So I would have to get a lot more specific on what we were doing, but the challenge with that is, is we do sign confidentiality agreements with those businesses, because a lot of it, we may be talking about trade secrets and/or patentable material or things of that nature.
What is the key metrics and goal? Prospect proposal, 20 minimum, what's it got to do?
I'm sorry, Commissioner, could you say, where is it?
In your scope of work, the key metrics and goal?
Mm-hmm, okay.
Prospect proposal.
Okay, gotcha, yep, sure. Typically, what that's really dealing with, that's dealing with a couple of different things, but in terms of proposals, it could be anything from research-driven to new manufacturers or things that we're doing to help take existing or startup businesses. The way that we typically split it right now, the chamber handles a lot of the retention, and then when they get into a situation where they need area of expertise, typically Blake would contact with me, and then we would set up an exchange of information, or I would just go out separately and meet with them. But in terms of some of those proposals, that could be anything from, anything that's helping to drive financial impact into the community. So a lot of those, a lot of what we do on our side is the initial startup in the very small companies that we're actually helping to incubate through either Block 22 or other areas at the university.
And the prospect visits, what is, to, what does that mean? Do you go there, or do you bring other industries into the city?
Both, actually. What we would do is we would go out and help recruit existing businesses. Part of what we've been working on is a clustering plan, specifically in the plastics and polymer space, because we have such a strong area of resource there through the university and through other companies that already exist. We want to build off of that and help bring more, because that's obviously what would help build jobs and build longer sustaining opportunities here.
So two is what you do for the year, or do you have more than two that...
Two visits?
Yes. You might really look at the city.
Well, I mean, there...
The visit, prospect visit, two is a fall required?
Well, I mean, I think that's just a bare, that's a bare minimal. Typically, what we're looking at is, that's really geared more towards a national type. We're looking at trying to bring national or larger regional-based businesses back into Pittsburgh.
So you would have more than two a year?
We do, yes.
So an example of that might be if, say, when we were recruiting Honeywell. Is that an example where...
Oh, absolutely. I mean, that's a national ranked industry and business that we've recruited to do existing work to, I mean, previous years in excess of $500,000.
What are some of these manufacturing businesses that visit here? What are, what are their needs as a city?
Typically, what they're looking for, if they're coming to the Midwest, which we try to do a good job of finding, we work with companies currently on both coasts, and they're doing work here specifically because of the operational cost and the facilities that's... facilities that's available. So when we're out trying to help generate companies to come here, we're looking at opportunities for them to bring, a good example would be a research lab here in existence with our Tyler Research Center. We're working with a company in California that cannot afford to stand up a, a testing lab in California, but we can do it here for less than half the cost and we can employ people. And we're currently doing that in two different examples, both one from Baltimore and one from California.
What about our job force? I know there's a lot of businesses I've talked to in town, all with the large ones, that they are hiring, but they can't find people that want to work.
Absolutely. Workforce development is a key issue. It's one that we've been trying to really focus on and figure out how to build a better sustaining job force or a workforce. And it's really not just coming solely from Pittsburgh State University. It's areas like the County Technical Assistance Program out in the industrial park. We're trying to line up more programs. Pittsburgh State is looking at additional certificate programs just so that we can turn out more qualified workers for the organizations that need that workforce. That's a struggle, and that's one that we're, that we're taking pretty seriously in trying to figure out really good solutions on how to add people into the workforce. But you got to have people to add.
That's right. Thank you.
Well, in terms of our responsibility as a city for developing workforce, I mean, the, the relationships that we're talking about right now with PSU and the chamber are, are examples of how we would deploy that.
Sure.
Patrick, do you have any questions?
No, I don't know. I think it's a good, good project, and I look forward to continuing it.
Anyone? Question? I hear a motion?
So moved.
I'll second.
I second.
How could it's Patrick? It's been moved by Larry, seconded by Patrick to approve the Pittsburgh State University Business Development and Innovation Services Agreement. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Daryl. Moving on, plat, Redwood Development Inc. Consider the recommendation of the Planning Commission and Board of Zoning Appeals to approve the short form plat submitted by Redwood Development Inc. for the plating of the area located immediately west of Countryside Self-Storage, east of North Water Street, on the south side of East Fourth Street.
The area that we're looking at here is this entire parcel. It's again across from Horton's, it's the easiest reference there. It's across the street from it, to the west of the self, self-storage, and to the east of Water Street. And what they're looking at doing there is essentially, it would be a lot split, but since the property's already been cut up one time already, you only get one bite at the apple, after that, you've got to go in and replat. So that's what they're asking for. The parcel they're looking at setting out would be essentially between the self-storage on the east side, over to the creek drainage basin there on the west side. And they've, have it set aside for potential future roadways, that area behind it develops, that there would not be blocking access to the property behind it. It passed unanimously at the Planning Commission and asked for your approval.
And this is a follow-up to last meeting when we approved the?
Yeah, correct. This is the next step in there to get that.
Any questions for Cameron?
I have none. I'd move to approve it.
Have a motion by Larry, seconded by Dawn, to approve a plat, Redwood Development Inc. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to request to change zoning. The Planning Commission Board of Zoning Appeals, in its meeting of January 27th, 2020, voted unanimously to recommend governing board approval of a request submitted by Redwood Development Inc. of Joplin, Missouri, to change the zoning of the property located immediately west of Countryside Self-Storage, east of North Water Street, on the south side of East Street, from R1A, single-family residential, to RP4, planned apartment house to allow an apartment complex to be constructed on the property.
Again, this is the next step in what was approved at last meeting for recommending the project, looking at taking this track B that you see there. Again, it's the area between the drainage well, headed east to the self-storage there to rezone that for apartments.
Which we approved.
The only drive to that development would be where, on Fourth Street?
Is it, you're saying for the development itself?
Yes.
Okay. We don't have a site plan, a specific site plan for that. I'd expect it to probably, probably be about center of that lot as it faces Fourth Street.
But that would be empty and on to Fourth Street?
Yes.
And how many apartments would that be?
I've got Brent here from Redwood. I'll let him speak on what they have planned. He's going to do a much better job than I will.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. Thank you for having us here tonight. He's correct. The first phase, which is what we came to you a few weeks ago, is 48 units with a clubhouse that will be large enough, that has a storm shelter, large enough in, in order to house and protect all of the future tenants. This is a multi-story, multi-phase project. The first phase of the project, the entrance will come off of Fourth Street, and then there will be a future road on the east side, which has been identified in the plat. And there will likely be another entrance that comes in off of that road as well for the future phases that are on the south side of that property.
Well, my concern is with the high school in that area and the amount of traffic that goes through there, and add in 48 more units with the traffic that's going to be dumping, bumping onto Fourth Street, 8:00 in the morning. Is that, and I don't know how far that school zone reduction, 20 mile an hour goes, but that's just a concern I have with the extra amount of traffic and the safety in that area.
With the development there, since that's a state route going through there, the state will require a traffic impact study to be done as part of their entrance to that. And again, I say, no, the traffic there for the high school tends to be highly concentrated. And this is outside that speed limit zone as well.
Well, I know, I had talked to K-Doc on reducing the speed through that school zone from 20 mile an hour, and they did their study. And the study said that it didn't warrant a reduction. But I remember telling them, if somebody is hit or killed, it will be lower. And fully after that, we had a student hit, and they reduced the speed. So, you know, you said they will do a study, and it's outside its 20 mile an hour zone right now.
Right.
Right. So that's the concern I have, the safety of the num, act, extra traffic. But, you know, you have to.
We do have two crossings there that have the rapid flashing horizontal vehicles as well, so that is, is a great feature there as well.
Right.
Prominent area to possibly think about, but with the second phase coming, coming off of Water Street, I think that is?
That would be the new street on the east side there beside the Countryside Self-Storage.
Yeah, but would it be coming off of Water Street, you said, as well? On the second development?
No, the, the.
First phase is off of Fourth. Yeah, the first phase.
The second phase would be along that new proposed rightway on the east side of the property there, right next to the Countryside Self-Storage.
So it'd be an access road and then go on to Fourth Street.
Right, yeah. The parcel they have doesn't go over to Four, uh.
Doesn't go along Water Street.
No. It goes over to the drainage swell there.
Any further questions?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Patrick.
I, I think that we have to remember that anytime we have a development like this coming in, it's, it's good for the whole community. And if it makes us look forward to expanding Fourth Street or doing some other infrastructure, that, that's a good thing for the community. It's something we have to look forward to. And after that, I'd move to approve.
Who would second?
Great. Moved by Patrick, seconded by Larry to approve the request for change in zoning. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. All right. The commission met at 4:30 for a study session to review the land use, what, land use plan. We will consider staff recommendation to adopt the city land use plan. That was.
Happy to answer any questions you might have.
She's here to answer any questions. Are there any key points that maybe we brought up during the study session that we think's important to, to share now that we're live? I think, Larry, you talked about should, shall, and you want to reiterate your point.
Well, I, I think the amount of people that showed up, even though of the total population, it may not be a lot of people, but it was a lot of people showed up and had input on this process. And, and this is still a process. There's nothing being done here that is set in concrete, so any changes has to come around for approval by planning and zoning and, and the commission, so. But Britton and Quentin and the people that worked on that did a, you know, it was a large undertaking, and there's a lot of information in that, so I, I just commend them on the, on the amount of work that was done. And it's a, it, it's a development, you know, it's a, at least it's a roadmap to, for future development, because a lot of the flood zone stuff that was discussed is going to become more important.
Yeah, absolutely. This plan will serve as a guidebook for our office. It's not set in stone or anything like that. These will, anything that comes from this will come before you, and this truly just works as something that we can reference and use to guide us as, and developers that come in and ask questions as well.
Well, for myself, like you said, Larry, there's a lot in here. I would like to table any action on this tonight and give me a little more chance to review it for myself and possibly have some action on it at the next commission meeting. Make a motion to table it this evening.
Motion by Chuck to table action on the land use plan. Is there a second?
I second it because I have a lot of concerns about the contents. There is a lot of people in Pittsburgh, and you guys have done a great job, but you were talking about several hundred people compared to the amount of people that live in Pittsburgh. There's a lot of people that do not know about the contents of this. I think we need to be more informed about it. And, because once I started reading, I was there too, and there's a lot in here. So it's, in my opinion, that hour for me wasn't long enough. I have more questions.
So there's a motion on the table to table this? Motion on the table to table. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Sorry, me.
Uh, you're an aye.
I'll say aye, yes.
Okay.
It's not going to hurt to, to let them study it a little bit more.
Opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Okay. Motion to table, the land use plan for approval is approved, so we will, so bring it to the next meeting. Is that long enough time for them?
Absolutely. And I'm happy to answer any questions that come up with me down there.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to city purchasing policy. Consider amending the city's purchasing polit, policy to reflect changing the local preference percentage from 3% to 5%. Darren, who's thinking?
Yeah. Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. I believe it was last meeting, Commissioner Marcel brought up the fact that the county had raised their local preference from 3% to 5%.
Well, they never had one before. I, I'm a member of the county commission, and he said they didn't have one previous, but they adopted one 5%. And I'm not sure, but I thought I read something about the alarm of even having a 5%. And I, you know, for a number of years, I've brought this up. I think it's a way we can try to help the businesses we have, and that's why I, I would like to see it raised to 5%, not to 3%.
We, we said we'd take a look at it and bring it back to you at this meeting tonight. And I put the, the policy in your agenda with the only change being the, the local preference being bumped up from 3% to 5%. I went back and analyzed our, our bids for the years of 2019 and 2018, the last two years of bid activity, and there was only one, one bid that would have made a difference, going from 3% to 5%.
From a local bidder?
Well, they had a local presence, but the company, it's a big company all over the USA.
So in two years, this would have impacted one bid?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Do you know what the, the difference between the 3% and 5% in terms of?
On that particular bid? Yes, I have it here. Hold on one second. It was about a, about $12,000 difference on a fairly large project.
So the percentage was smaller in terms of overall? Okay. Any other questions for Jamie?
I, I don't have a question. I just have a comment. I'm not opposed to this, but I want, I just want to say that, uh, I think it's good for the businesses to be able to have this 5%, but on the other hand, we will then be charging our constituents the extra 2%. So it, it doesn't come without a negative side to it also.
Right.
Well, just, I understand what you're saying, Patrick, but a lot of our local businesses pay copy tax, and, you know, they also help support the community. And I think if we can do a little bit for them when we can, they appreciate that, so.
I'm sure they will.
Yeah. And again, Patrick, it only, it affected one bid in the last two years.
I understand that. I, I, I just made the comment.
Sure.
As a point of respect.
Right. Appreciate that. Okay. Any other questions? Chuck, do you want to make the motion?
I'll make a motion to change the weighted bid from 3% to a 5% for local preference.
Is there a second?
I second it.
Moved by Chuck, seconded by Cheryl. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
We'll, we'll get it, uh, we'll get the new policy put on the website tomorrow.
Thanks.
Great, thank you. Non-agenda reports and requests by monthly budget review.
Okay, this is a year-end review as well.
Ouch, okay. So this is as of December 31st?
Yes, ma'am. December 31st of 2019, for our budgeted funds, we, uh, it was, overall, it was a pretty good fiscal year, yeah, as far as I'm concerned. We weren't, uh, we weren't overspent on any of the expenditure budgeted funds. All the revenues for the funds performed as expected or estimated. The general fund, we started with about $5 million at the end of the year, and we ended the year with about $6 million. But the bulk of that increase was due to our savings on our health plan, which is part of the general fund. The utility fund, we started the year with $2.9 million, and we got $3.5 million at the end of the year. And you all know, we got a wastewater plant project coming up that we're going to have to work on. The street sales tax, we collected a $2.1 million, and we spent almost $2.3 million on roads for the year. We still, we still had money in the bank after that. We can't spend it all once, or we won't have no money to operate on the next project, so we have to always leave a little bit in reserve for that. I really don't have any issues with how all the, the budget worked out this year, past year. Sales tax for 2019 was up 3.35% compared to 2018 collections. It was a good year for sales tax, which is a pretty good indicator of how your local economy is performing. So with that, I'll entertain any questions or comments.
So this might be a question Blake can answer. Our poll factor in terms of the most recent figure on how many individuals are coming to our community and contributing to?
The, the trade poll factor is an indicator that's issued by the, the state each year. That is a reflection of how many shoppers. That is a reflection of how many shoppers your community is losing to another community as opposed to how many you're attracting from outside the area. One is an even mix of you're losing as many as you're attracting and Pittsburgh's weighted trade pull factor is 1.67, which places it second highest in the state, second only to Garden City. So that means that there are a number of people who are now coming to Pittsburgh to do their shopping as Pittsburgh really emerges as a regional hub, not only for shopping, but healthcare and a number of different things. Those visitors spend quite a bit of money in our community while they're here, so that's good for us all.
Also, the hotels for attendance.
Certainly.
Break records.
Yeah, the Convention and Visitors Bureau reports that last year was a record year for them as well. They had two record months in 2019, so as Jamie said, all signs indicate that our community shows no signs of stopping its growth.
Thank you. Questions for Jamie? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Darren, are there any other reports from the city?
We don't have anything.
Commissioners? Nope, all right. Patrick, do you have anything for non-agenda items?
No, I don't. Thank you.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Oh, wait, I'm sorry.
No, move.
Wait a minute.
Row Barson's again, up here about Block 22. Going over my records, I kind of misspoke last time. I said that we were tested by August 1st when actually, actually, we were tested the latter part of April and the first part of May of '18, which meant all of our hydrostatic tests were passed at that time.
I'm sorry, I'm confused. I think I missed the first part of your presentation. What are you trying to share with us?
The Block 22, I was just wondering, you know, how many other people had tests and certified their portion of the project?
Well, I think certainly as a city and we have an interest in Block 22, but we have no responsibility at this point.
Well, I'd just kind of like to know how many other, you know, when did the full certificate occupancy, the permanent certificate occupancy, when was it issued?
What department should he contact, Darren, to get that information? Is that public information?
It should be.
Yeah, you can ask me.
I mean, I'd kind of like to know.
Okay, well, we need to refer you to the appropriate city department. We obviously don't have that information tonight, so who should?
Row, did you ask when the temporary or the permanent?
Both. I mean, they filed the temporary and, you know?
Okay, well, someone will get back to you.
So what were you talking about tested? What does that mean?
Pardon me?
What was, you talked about you was tested. What did it test?
We hydrostatically test all of our piping.
Your sprinkler system.
The sprinkler system.
And who tested?
The 200 pounds, we did and we have copies here.
Basically, what you're saying is that you completed your work.
We completed all the work at that time in April and May and what I, you know, I'll give this to the clerk and then Vessino Company also, we had $125,000 lien against the project, which Vessino paid $25,000 to one of my?
I'm just going to stop you.
Okay.
Because really, there's no, there's nothing that we can do.
Well, I know there's nothing that you can do. It's, you know, kind of like the analogy of, you know, I'm not going to tell some guy's wifey's running around on her, I'm just going to ask her if she knows.
Okay.
And it's, I want the people of Pittsburgh to know what's going on.
Right. And I think that you've accomplished that, so I would, if you have information related to the city responsibility for occupancy, Darren will give that to you.
I'd like to know when, you know, when the final certificate occupancy and if you want these records, I'll leave them with the clerk.
I would leave them with the city manager. I mean, or the clerk and, yeah.
I'll take them, Row.
Yep.
And I'll get you an answer tomorrow.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Done, move.
Move by Larry, seconded by Patrick. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Bye, Patrick. Thanks for calling in.